And I suspect they might make it through this week.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the City of Cedar Wully Council meeting, May 27th. Please arise for a flag.
Very, 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 very.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Those leaves pop up all over and then go right down the tree.
So council, we've been through the consent calendar before. A through J, a note, the candidate form is October 21st, which is a Wednesday night, third weekend in October. So I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar unless you want to take something off.
Is that candidate form on the consent calendar?
Yes.
May I take that off?
Yep. Item J will come off. And now I need a motion for A through I.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, A through I excluding J.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Galbraith, second by Councilmember Carnegie to approve A through I excluding item J. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? All right, passes now Brett.
I just, I think the ballots come out like on October 16th, don't they? I wonder why so late in the season because people are going to already have voted, they're not going to be informed. I think it's important to have that earlier than later.
I was thinking that too, but.
Yeah.
I think so.
But Aaron thinks we're going to do a mailing. How's that word?
Well, let me pull out my election calendar. Didn't I put in the memo when the ballots come out, right?
Mm-hmm.
What did I say?
Sixteenth.
Was it Friday?
Yeah. And people do vote that first weekend typically.
Yeah, that's a heavy voting period.
We hope they vote that first weekend.
Yeah, so good.
We hope they vote.
The city council's on the 14th and our utility bills go out, you know, I don't know, I'd say by the 5th. And that's really going to be our primary method of inviting people. And so when I looked at the calendar that way, and I remembered last year, we ran it in a similar timeframe, which was just after ballots drops. You know, you could, you could maybe do, you could maybe do the 15th, although I think getting ballots is a pretty positive reminder that there's something going on. I mean, ideally, you kind of have your reminder that there's an event, your invitation and your ballot, and you go, hey, remember, I'll go learn some more before I punch the ticket. But it's really up to you, you know, we could do it on the 15th. I would of course avoid a Friday. We could do it on the, Monday doesn't, for some reason, just seems unintuitive to me. And planning commission, I think, meets the 20th. Aren't they the 3rd Tuesday, John? Planning commission, 3rd Tuesday.
So you want to do it on a Thursday night then?
Well, you could do the 15th if you prefer. So it'd be the day before the ballots drop. I think you lose some people because they don't have their ballots yet personally. I think the ballots in fact are a reminder that there's an election coming up.
Well, your reminder at the same time, it's the same problem with those, our quality of life flyers. You know, not everybody who's a renter, who's going to vote, is going to even get that notification.
Yeah, well, we don't actually know how many people don't, or we'll know that probably by the end of the week or early next week. The, so we don't know what the number is, so we'll find out that number as well as the cost to do a separate mailing for those folks. But I would just remind you that last year, we had standing room only in the room, so even if we missed some people, we couldn't have really fit more people. We're kind of at capacity.
Did you say they get mailed out on the 16th?
The ballots go in the mail on the 16th. So you're not getting your ballot till the 17th or 19th.
Yep. I remember last time they were scattered over a couple of days.
Yeah, it sort of depends, but it's really your pleasure. I think you could do the 15th or you could do the 21st. Obviously, I like the 21st because it's after you have your ballot.
I like that too, actually.
So we need to make a decision.
Because they're really not, a lot of people really aren't going to have their ballots that first weekend anyway, that, the 17th, if they're just getting mailed on the 16th.
Well, just imagine this, that we can hope and dream and maybe a reporter shows up and reports on it, you know, and maybe people would be informed that way also.
Yeah.
I don't know. I just think there's a lot of it.
In a perfect world, you could even have, and I invited them last year, and you know, maybe you all would be helpful with this. I would love to have the radio here doing a live broadcast.
Like the old days.
I participated in a forum, I guess in 2002, that was live broadcast. And, you know, it was, it was an effective means for people to get a sense of candidates. I didn't even get a return phone call back when I invited our local radio station to do that.
They don't have like Kirk or Kirk Tolliver's.
Everybody told them we'd record it even. We could provide it to them as a digital file if they didn't want to do it live. I didn't even get a phone call back.
I wonder if we could do like KSVR or something, the college station.
When does voters pamphlet come out?
Or that upriver station 941?
It's simulcast.
Oh, they'll come out from the general desk.
So.
I think earlier is better than no opinion.
Make a motion. I don't really care.
Does anybody know when the voters pamphlet comes out?
It just comes, yeah, it just comes whenever.
Should come before you get your ballots.
Yeah. Sometimes it doesn't. I didn't even get one last time.
Sometimes, some years they're electronic on the one.
Yeah.
There'll be a paper one for November.
The electronic ones usually just a primary. I'm sure they'll be out before the ballots are.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we do it for the 15th, October 15th.
And that's a Thursday night?
Yes.
Okay. We have a second.
Second.
Galbraith. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Sandstrom, a second by Councilmember Galbraith to have the neutral candidate form on October 15th, a Thursday. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Aye.
So put your hands up. Four, four.
One, two, three, against.
One, two, three.
I wanted to make you.
He's got to vote one way. Yeah, he should vote.
I don't care.
That's not the answer.
And abstention is a negative, and you can do the tiebreaker.
Well, it's already three to two. It's three, two.
Under the council rules, you know, the absence of a vote is an affirmative vote.
Yes, that's correct.
It would be a four to two vote is what just happened there.
You can't abstain.
Okay. So it goes four to two? Any objections?
Damn.
Okay. So the motions are passed. Let's go to a presentation, and this would be Scott at David Evans and Associates.
Thank you, Mike.
Guess you're filling in for a guy with a broken arm?
Yeah, exactly. So my name's Scott Sossef. I was the project manager on the design side of this project for David Evans and Associates. And as I said in the agenda, Mike Clark was supposed to be doing the presentation. He's a DDA, but he's also APWA Washington State President. Unfortunately, he was in a small biking accident where we could end up breaking his arm.
See? They're dangerous bikes.
So he didn't feel too well tonight, so he.
He's on medication.
But just to give you a brief history, Mark and I put together a few applications for works for this project. One was with the American Council of Engineering Companies of Washington, which is ACDC and their own subsidiary, Washington. This project won bronze award for the ACDC award application. And then it was Project of the Year Award for APWA for transportation projects between $5 million and $25 million. So it was an outstanding project and went for free gas in Cedar Wully. Again, this was a very example, outstanding example of collaboration between many agencies during the funding portion, the design, and through construction. Just mentioned a few, you know, City of Cedar Wully, Washington State Department of Transportation, Washington State Transportation Improvement Board, Skagit Council of Governance, Skagit Transit, Publicity District, Utility District, one of Skagit County, and then the Cland Corporation. So on behalf of David Evans and Associates, I'd like to present this whole spring poster to the City of Cedar Wully in appreciation for the opportunity DDA had to work on and be part of this award-winning project. So thank you very much.
All right. Do it. Why don't you come up? Why don't you accept it? Yeah.
Who's got the camera?
I got a camera right here.
Aaron's got a camera.
Right here.
There's a camera right here.
If I know how to work it.
I got mine.
Four, six. Got it on there.
And. Yeah, there we go.
Smile pretty.
Hundreds of telephone.
Good, I must have got one on the door.
I think I took that about three times.
Thank you very much.
Two of us.
Yeah. David and his team, Mark's team did a great job.
Thank you.
It's a beautiful project for me.
It really is.
And it works.
I'm loving it for the most part.
It's looking good, it works.
Yeah. Tony's funny, don't like it.
Really fun to go straight on.
It wasn't their fault. Can't turn left on Good Road if you're going to idlerage, so I always have to remember.
I like turning right on Good Road.
Tony, there's some roundabouts on there.
He's grimacing.
The car's already on you, that just came in. Because there's.
Okay, we will go to item five. This is Rotary. This would be John Hunter coming up and speaking about it.
We need an ESO in here.
We had an ESO, I thought. Couldn't find it?
I can go fetch one if you'd like one.
Good evening. This is something pretty special I want to show to the council tonight. Cedar Wully Rotary Club was advised that Testrick Field was going to have to be relocated, and we were asked to participate in this project, and we jumped right on it. I've got a couple of color conceptual drawings, so nothing in here is carved in stone, although we have submitted the plans for permitting.
Do you have pictures of these?
Yeah.
Right here.
Yeah, those are exactly the same. Like I said, those are conceptual.
So that one's for Tommy.
Home plate is designed to be right about where it is now, except we're going to move it in about 18 to 20 feet. That gives us a little more room for foul ball control and that sort of thing. It's a Little League park, so all the bases and everything are set to Little League tournament rules. And this can be a joint project between the City of Cedar Wully, the Cedar Wully Rotary Club Foundation, and the Little League Association from Cedar Wully. Right now, we're looking at a schedule, it's going to take two or three years to build this project. We're estimating the cost to be somewhere between $400,000 and $500,000. We have a committee fundraising at this time, and we hope to have the permits in a few weeks. Our goal is when Little League shuts down around June 15th, that we'll be able to start replacing the field. And if you haven't noticed, home plates, it's about two feet higher than the outfield area, so we've got a lot of grading to do. The good thing is, that's really good dirt out there, we won't have to do much for drainage or anything else in that regard. We haven't decided yet, or I should say Little League hasn't decided yet, whether they want a turf infield or a dirt infield. There's no rule on that. It all comes down to maintenance, and that is still up to discussion. So we'd like to have the field ready for spring ball next year, which means a lot of work has to take place this fall and this summer to get that grass all set for next year. I don't know what else to tell you. The grandstands are going to be elevated about three to four feet above the ground. There'll be aluminum bleachers out there, that'll seat a little over 300 people. There'll be dugouts, pro-style dugouts, bullpens for the pitchers. The fences will be a little higher. Nothing that's out there now is going to be reused. We're going to put in all new equipment. Everything will be brand new. This is going to be a showpiece. One thing we wanted to do to fit in with the Cedar Wully theme is the walls that you see around the grandstands. Right now, what we're looking at, those are brick columns, but the walls we're looking at are brick, or excuse me, a concrete log system that comes out of Montana. It's a heck of a product. You cannot tell it's not wood. The good thing about it is, there's zero maintenance. And we know how we fought with that with some of our other log structures in town, at Riverfront Park and downtown. So right now, I have a sample of this sitting on my deck, it's going to sit out there all winter, we're going to see how it looks in the spring, and see if that's going to work for us. Do you have any questions about it? Yes?
I do, John. We talked about seeing if there was like a graffiti-resistant finish that would work with that. Have we learned anything?
Nothing I have been able to find is graffiti-resistant. So what we're hoping is, is that the neighbors and everybody here keep a really good watch on this, that we do not want it to be spoiled. This product is sealed, so it gives us a chance to clean it off. It's not a smooth surface, it's wood green and got a carved look to it, so it won't lend itself real good to graffiti, but other than just flat, smooth concrete walls, there really isn't much, and we really didn't want to do that, because we want this thing to be a showpiece.
Well, isn't there an aftermarket like coating that you could put on it? I know, I'm pretty sure there is.
There may be. Once we determine what the siding's going to be, we can look in to see how it might be able to be treated. But that's still up in the air. We have a lot of money to raise for this project.
I just don't know if you guys know, John, he used to be a council member and then a sheriff, so he understands our concerns. I got one, I grew up in California, and we put in the dugouts, and then we ended up taking them out all around and raised them up because the, you either have to lock them up, because the kids will go down in there and then they were like urinating, they were, you know, we had to get them locked. And then I see this area here where you have all this, you know, you can't see if you're a policeman driving by. Are they going to lock that up at night, be able to lock it?
Well, I don't know, you know, I don't have an answer for that yet.
Because, you know, being a sheriff.
Those are good questions that'll be brought up in front of our group at Rotary that's going to put this on, so I'll be sure to relay those things.
It looks beautiful. I mean, it's, that's.
I would think that by the time we build this thing, that there's some real potential to put some wireless cameras out there that can be monitored. They're a heck of a deterrent, and, you know, at an affordable price.
Is this the same alignment? Is it still facing this way?
Yeah.
Well, don't you think from the park and then from our, just this walkway, you should be able to see every activity besides maybe in the dugout?
There's nobody here. We're here right after the council meeting.
How far, how far does our camera turn over there, the one that watches?
I'm just saying, we ended up having.
Anyway, we probably. Once you spend all this money, we want to make sure that it stays a thing of beauty for the City of Cedar Wully.
Yeah, you know, John, as a past Little League coach, I'd want to play all my games there.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I don't want to play at Riverfront anymore. So, exciting how that's going to work, it's going to be interesting.
Well, you know, right now, they kind of share this story out here, and they're going to have to figure out how to do that. We are not going to get involved in who gets to play on this field. That's going to be up to other people. We are going to make a gift to the city, and we hope that the people that do end up owning that park, which is going to be Little League for the most part, they're very enthusiastic about this project. They've already lined up, the supplier for the infield dirt, who supplies the dirt to the Mariners is going to supply dirt for this field at no charge.
Wow.
So we've got a lot of enthusiasm behind this project, and.
I have one other question to you.
Yes.
I've had people ask me, and I tell them what I know, but is there going to be a plaque explaining how and why this was dedicated? I mean, I know why, and the people in Cedar Wully know why, but the people coming don't.
Yeah, there will be.
A plaque of some sort.
Yeah, there will, right on the out, behind home plate. See if I can explain this. There's two entrance, stepped entrances here, and then there's two ramps here for handicap access. But on this wall, right behind the announcer's booth, there's going to be a place for signage as well as all over on these walls, whatever we think is. And we've had lemonies graciously make us some very nice bronze plaques in the past, and so, you know, if we do put something up there, it's going to be first class.
First class, okay. So where's the snack bar at?
Yeah.
So, good question. All those answers are still up in the air. One thing we do know, there are no restrooms associated with this.
Well, we have the new ones that we built.
So we have new ones over there. The problem is, is that 10-year-olds can't make it that far. So during Little League season, they're going to have a couple of porta-potties located real close to the dugouts, because they're only good for about 50 feet during a game. So the rest of the year, people have to trek over to the, to a new restroom.
Oh, go ahead. Great project. You said the decision between, between grass and turf hasn't been made. What's the determining factor? Because turf is far superior.
You know, that's going to be a, probably a group decision between the city and Rotary and Little League, and.
Is it money?
I don't think it's so much money as it is maintenance. That's really what it comes down to. There's some issues with having a turf infield. The dirt builds up on the edges during the season from just all the raking and kids running and stuff, and then that has to be trimmed down to avoid the bad hops of the ball. This has all been explained to me, by the way, I'm just relaying what I've heard. You get a lot of bad hops with balls hitting those little berms and going wild, so there's issues pro and con for a dirt.
Basically, with the turf field, even if it's half, the only dirt you have is the pitcher's mound. All the rest of it is turf, so.
Yeah.
What's the infield?
The infield's all turf.
Oh, yeah, right.
There's no dirt.
Is it going to be, is it going to be dirt or turf with a dirt running base?
Down in Seattle, a lot of them are, the whole infield is turf and the outfield is grass.
Yeah. And that's possible.
And the only dirt is the pitcher's mound.
As you probably know, you know, the school district spent a million dollars for that new turf football field. And that's a great product, but it costs a lot of money. You have to do a lot of excavation, there's several layers to build up, something like that. I don't know the range, since it's not elaborate out here, because quite frankly, even in January, when we have a wet year, there's no water standing on this field. It's really good drainage, so we wouldn't have to go to that extent. But we do want it to be nice, we don't want the city to have to do anything other than really mow it. Little League will be out there raking and taking care of the infield and baselines and striping and all of that, and frankly, excited about it.
I'd like to suggest that you do turf. And I can speak from experience, because I'm the one who, who put the rake on the back of my truck, and I remember the old Memorial Field.
Right.
And I was the one who drug it before the high school games played. And you can never get rid of all the rocks, and you can never get rid of all the bumps. And I, I don't know, those people that play baseball, that is not good.
Yeah. So you have a big supporter in Josh Rico, he's one of the people on.
Oh, Josh Rico.
He's also a Rotarian, he's on this committee, so he's, he's really leaning that way.
They just, they just turfed Joe Martin Stadium in Vellingham, and it's beautiful, but 1.7 million.
Yeah. So that's the thing you have to remember, this is a Little League park, it's smaller.
Got to keep it under a million?
You know, the baselines are shorter.
How about the parking in the alley? I don't see any there. And I know the neighbors are.
So, yeah, there is many on this, this is conceptual. On the plans that have been submitted to the city, there are parking stalls along the alleyway.
So there will be parking, because the, okay.
There may not be parking initially, but they are on the plans. So basically, our, our plans are everything inside that parking line. So I encourage you to look at the plans that have been submitted to the city to see what really is what we're shooting for. And again, those things can be changed.
Well, the concept on the parking is that that's probably something that Nathan's team will be doing work on, and maybe initially, it becomes just an extension of the existing kind of gravelled area. So we'll have to deal with that swell or whatever.
If you've got 15 more feet, but, because the neighbors over here, you know, we met with them, they were concerned about that. And then, and then I guess they'll practice some times there, and then they'll not use the backstops. So we got to teach Little League to not practice them and the balls going.
The fences are going to be taller, there aren't going to be gaps like there is out there now. I've tried to get ahold of the Knowles that own the, gotten most of those foul balls. I went by their house today, I haven't had any luck last week or today, but I will get in touch with them, because I want to run this project by them to make sure there aren't any problems that are going to crop up.
Yeah, they have a house in, in Coors, I think, so they, they kind of do back and forth.
Two houses.
Not in my backyard, John.
I have a question for you. I was wondering, what do you do with the, with the old equipment that you said you're not going to, you're going to use all new equipment?
Well, all the fencing will probably be salvaged for whoever needs it, if Little League needs it, it's someplace else, or the school district or whatever. There really isn't much there that's worth much. By the time you take it apart, there isn't much there to make it worth.
I'll come get the stands.
Recycling, other than just recycling.
Okay.
Good, looks good.
Nice.
All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Another great Rotary project.
Yeah, if you need, if you have other questions, Aaron can get in touch with me or John, and we'll try to keep you informed as this thing proceeds, and hopefully, there won't be any big issues. Thank you.
They'll probably be after you to build another field too, because we'll want to attract the regionals and the state and the United States tournaments.
You know, that's, that's a plan that we've had for a long time, to do something with a portion of that Northern State property to get ball fields out there for exactly, and we haven't had much luck. But maybe if something else happens at Northern State, this would be something to follow.
That's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
The approval process right now, Rotary's applied for actual permits through the permit center, but in your capacity as the owners of the park, it would be useful for, for a motion to be passed that authorizes the work to begin. So not in your regulatory approval role, but in your ownership of the park role, to say, yeah, Rotary, go forth and build, a motion to approve the project would be helpful.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the Rotary to proceed with their, their project.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Sandstrom, a second by Councilmember Galbraith to allow Rotary to proceed with your baseball project. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Bastianavis. Thanks, John.
All right, thank you very much.
And once, once we do have a project evaluation, if you kind of let Patsy know, then we'll, we'll keep that track of it, as we talked about, for our auditor friends.
All right, great.
Well, thank you very much, this is very exciting.
Okay, we will go to public comment time. This is something that's not on the agenda. If you want to speak, go on up. There's like two people, maybe.
Tony?
Tony not going to come up?
Tony.
Okay, we're kind of, we're going to pass that part, and we will go to new business, item seven, BLS ambulance transports, a first reading, and this would be Aaron.
So on your council base is, is the actual agreement that I referenced in the memo? We were working on that after the memo was written up until today. The chief and I have been working on that with the county. We believe there'll probably be one last change to this agreement, and, well, maybe just take a minute to walk through. I guess I'll back up briefly. I think you're all familiar with this, because we've talked about it several times. I'm, I'm calling it a first reading, mostly because I want to be sure that, that you can adopt it at the next meeting, so we can have a go-live date of July 1st. There are a lot of moving parts to make this ultimately a reality. This is really the first step, which is the agreement between the city and the county that gives the city access to the countywide EMS levy dollars for providing EMS services in Skagit County. The other moving parts of this puzzle are the Medicaid and other insurance program applications. We have applied for our Medicaid number, our Medicare number, our LNI number, and a whole host of insurance provider numbers. So, we're a couple months out from getting those all approved. Once those are approved, and you've adopted your ambulance utility fee schedule, as it's called for under your ambulance utility ordinance, then we'll actually be able to start billing for transports. I guess it's probably important to be very clear, we will not be billing for the services that we provide on scenes, just as we don't today. What's changing is that when we put a patient in the back of a Seadruly ambulance, we maintain two licensed ambulances, and we, we staff them up with a crew, and drive a patient to a hospital, it's only that portion that would be billed. So, our response at a scene, a car accident, a house, wherever, just like with a paramedic unit, if you don't get in the back and go for a ride, there's no bill. But that is new. At this point, we've, we've not ever billed for transporting. We don't do a lot of them, but we're anticipating that we'll do more as we continue to work with the countywide system to do more integration of BLS transports. This is a big-picture plan that allows for the system to be expanded, allowing our advanced life support units to be available for the big calls, while the basic life support units take some of the simpler calls. So, understanding that, this agreement accomplishes kinda six things for us, and if you just kinda flip through it, it's, it's basically a three-and-a-half-year agreement, takes us from now until the end of the current levy cycle. It's the first agreement of its type in the county, which is to say it's the first agreement that deals with a BLS service provider. The county currently has, I think, three contracts that are similar in nature, but each of those three are with the advanced life support service providers. That is the City of Anacortes, the Central Valley Ambulance Authority, which is a nonprofit entity created by Skagit County Government, and with Aeroskagit, which is a private nonprofit that operates east of Seadruly. So, this will be the first one that deals with the basic life support services. And if you kinda cruise through, it does a number of things. The first thing it'll do for the City of Seadruly is it pays our fire department $35 for every EMS call they go on. So, not for transports, but for going-on calls. Thirty-five dollars. We ran in the last rolling twelve months, 1,543 EMS calls. It will also provide, in 2015, ninety percent of a remount of our current worst ambulance, which is actually unfortunately our newest ambulance. And that's, that's, that's worth about $100,000 to the city. So, that's a pretty significant shot in the arm in terms of capital. It's intended to kinda give our fleet the capacity to start running more calls and, and be a little bit more robust. Of particular importance to the county is data collection, and to achieve this, they're requiring that we use and paying for the use of a software package called ESO, which creates these electronic patient reports. So, the county will be buying us two fairly tricked-out tablets. I, I think probably the, the value of those, they could buy, Bill could buy twenty or thirty of the ones, like you've been beta-testing for us. These are $2,000 per, per tablet units, probably the top-of-the-line Microsoft Surface tablets with the full case, the covers, the fancy infrared readers, and most importantly, the full three-year accident damage protection replacement plans. So, the concept there is, if we run it over with a fire truck, we can get a new one that's already paid for, and that, that, that's not a totally unlikely scenario. It's a possibility that something like that could occur over in the fire department. This allows the county to buy them once and be confident that for the remainder of the levy cycle, we'll have these units. They'll also pay, so that's $4,000, up to $4,000. They'll pay $7,000 per year for the subscription to the software. We're still working with the software vendor and expect as early as maybe the next meeting to have the software service agreement for your approval with ESO. So, that's a couple more items. They'll be providing, this clearly articulates that they'll pay our dispatch fees, which they've been doing for the last two years without a written agreement. It does put a cap, which is $21 per dispatch. I think we're currently paying about $12 per dispatch. I've told the county, and I think I've shared with you, from what I've learned, having helped the dispatch center for this last five months, I expect to see our rates go up by about 20 to 25 percent a year, each year for the next five years. So, that $21 is still more than where I would predict our rates need to be to make that dispatch center functionally operational. So, that's an important piece for us. It's pretty significant. That's 1,500 calls times the $12 currently. So, it's a, a lot of money. There's also provision in here that will provide, I think it was $5,000 for equipment, and another, what is it, $9,000, Dean, for disposable supplies?
$9,000 for disposable supplies.
So, that's something that they currently do, but, but that formalizes it. So, those six elements, and what they expect from the city in return is that we're available with our licensed ambulances to make calls, and the language specifically is that we will have trauma-verified, basic-life-support ambulance services available for dispatch 24 hours a day, seven days a week, on an as-needed basis, and when available, at the operational discretion of the fire chief. That was an important piece for us, because we're not ready to commit to all these calls. There are actually quite, quite a lot of them. The Central Valley Ambulance Authority is not ready to give up all these calls. They need them to be fiscally solvent. We're not trying to damage their ability to operate. We wanna work with the CVAA. It's really important to us to have a good relationship, particularly in the field, between the medics and the EMTs and the fire department. So, this is, this is kinda just baby steps to get the ball rolling. We believe that this will absolutely make the ALS unit more available, and I guess my hope is that operationally, what we'll see happen is when Med 1 is on a call, and the next call that comes in is a true BLS call, you know, we, we always say grandma stubbed her toe, that Seadruly Fire will go handle that before Med 4 leaves Burlington Station, or Med 2 leaves Mount Vernon, or before they bring Med 3 over from, clear over by La Conner.
Early wake-up.
So, that would leave those med units available to take, you know, the heart attack or something of that nature that's, you know, higher, higher skill levels required. Is there anything you wanna add on that?
Kinda what's happening right now, that's, that's, we're actually doing transports. We're doing, splitting down with the medics. It's not uncommon where we'll split down with a medic, and, and our ambulance will end up at Lake McMurray. It's happened. And right now, none of that, none of this is formalized with the county or with the CVAA. We just kinda do it to make, to get the job done. We make sure it gets, the person gets taken care of. And what they're doing with all this is kinda formalizing it. And of course, getting this type of contractual service from the county for their BLS calls.
Thirty years?
Thirty years. And they're just now recognizing that the other cities are doing the same thing, and we just have to be the first in line. We're one group of people.
So, so, first reading?
First reading. So, unless there are any questions, the only change that I'm expecting to see for the next council meeting is, at the same time as this gets approved, we'll have a, a letter of request that's consistent with Exhibit C, that says, "Hey, we're ready to get our ambulance re-chastied." So, we'd be in the 10 percent city pays, 90 percent county pays column, and we've asked that they approve that at the same time as they approve the agreement. So, I'd expect to see that at the next meeting, and we're being told that that's what they're expecting to see. So, that's about us. Would we figure about a six-month? Ultimately, it'll take us about six months, about $130,000 project. Chief here hasn't quite figured out what he's gonna do without his, his primary ambulance for a couple months while they do the actual build-out. But basically, they'll take the ambulance in this building, they'll pull the box off, they'll throw away the Ford six-liter diesel and everything that it's hooked to, pop a new chassis under it, put the box back on, but they'll have repainted the box, relight it, relighted it with LED lighting, cleaned it out, re-scribed it. It'll be essentially a brand-new rig that they get to operate on for the next, what do we have, 15 years? Fifteen-year service life.
So, I have, it's for three-and-a-half years.
Yeah.
We have 90 days. We can pull out anytime we want to.
Right. So can they.
Okay, 'cause I just wanna see us down to, I know we're getting closer, baby steps, but I just want us to be treated like Anacortes. And Burlington, I think, is gonna get a new ambulance, or someone is. We get a fixed-up one.
The, the concept is that they would, they would also fall under Exhibit C. Now, they're, they're not currently working with an agreement, but the idea is that Exhibit C would be the same, you know, Anacortes, or Mount Vernon and Burlington, we get the same treatment as Seadruly. So, you'd basically look at, and if they want a new ambulance, and they have the call volume to support it, they could be at the 80 percent level. The county'd pay 80. So, the county is willing to pay more if you buy a cheaper unit. They'll pay 90 percent of a remount versus only 80 percent of a new unit, and then it just is driven by what your call volume is. And the concept behind this is that it's expandable to other entities in a way that's fair.
So, they'll get $35, too. I don't wanna hear, a year from now, someone else gets $100.
Well, if, if that's the case, then we'd have to go back to the county and say, "Hey, you know, that's not fair," and trigger our 90-day termination.
That's all I want.
You know, my expectation is, is that we're looking for system equity, and representing Seadruly, I think, we've been very clear that what happens here should be something that can happen there, and what happens there should be something that can happen here.
Yeah.
It's just gotta be fair.
Yeah.
Are there any questions or concerns?
Is there any additional revenue or anything could be used for, for fire department staffing to maybe alleviate some of the problems with the volunteering?
Well, so, what are, what the chief's plan is for this is to take all of the additional revenue, relieve all of it, as well as additional revenue that we anticipate seeing from Fire District 8 when we renew that contract effective 1-1 of 16, and move all of our part-time staff up to $15 an hour from a current $12 an hour. Move our volunteers from $11 to $13, and then double our officers' pay from $100 a month to $200 a month, more or less. It sounds better when you say double it. We're gonna double it. But it's, you know, what, what we're finding is two things, well, three things, really. We, we're having a hard time attracting volunteers, which is not unique to Seadruly. That's something that's happening everywhere. Largely, I believe it's, well, there's two factors, significant factors. One is the enhanced training requirements. You know, 30 years ago, you could walk in, say, "I wanna volunteer." The chief would hand you the gear and say, "Here's your pager. Show up when the call happens," and you'd learn when you got there. Now, we're gonna send you to EMT school. We're gonna run you through Fire Academy. You're gonna become firefighter-one certified. You're gonna have an EMT certificate, and you're also gonna be coming to turnout every Monday night for as long as you're with the department. So, it's, it's a big commitment, and, you know, EMT is what, three, four months where you're doing every weekend and a couple nights a week, you know? So, huge commitment.
It'd be a lot of money.
And then the other factor, of course, is the nature of our employment base. You know, I can, I'm sure Seadruly's no different in that regard than, you know, I, I know just in the last 20 years in La Conner, you know, Mark Clark Company employed a couple hundred people. And when a fire call came out, those employees left work, went to the fire station, handled the call. And as that company transitioned from being a locally-owned company to an international company, to ultimately not there at all anymore, you can see the ability for people to volunteer slowly diminish. And I suspect, I don't know if I'm right, that the Skagit probably let people go to fire calls. Did they let people go to fire calls? Tony?
Wake up, Tony!
Hey, the Skagit Corporation.
Wake up, Tony!
Did they let people go to fire calls? Do they?
Yes, they did.
I thought so.
Yeah. You know, and so that, that, that was a model that worked all across America with homegrown companies, big employers. They'd say, "Yeah, we can afford to have 510 guys leave and go help the community." You know, in the last two decades, I, I feel like we've really seen that crank down. Part of that's the nature of the calls. You know, back in those days, they might've done 200 calls a year, and they're mostly fire or significant calls. Now, Dean's gonna hit 2,000 calls this year, with 1,600 of them will be EMS calls, and a whole bunch of those are calls that I think, if you think about a volunteer's mindset, that they might not entirely feel like they really needed to be there. So, it's just, there's some real complicating factors. So, long way of saying, we'll be bringing to you a budget proposal to spend all of this revenue on staff.
The draft has been agreed to by all parties in its current form, or is there still work you're doing on this?
No, I think this is gonna be the draft that you'll see on June 10, and the county would see the following week, unless there's something we've, we've bumped up against. At this point, the county's chief civil deputy is, I think, happy. The EMS director's happy. The chief's happy. I'm happy.
And I'm happy that it's at the operational discretion of the fire chief's. That needs to stay in there forever. We can't lose that.
Well, so, if, if we were to lose that, it would come at a cost. You know, in other words, if we, if we took on that, an enhanced role where we, you know, quote-unquote, owned BLS calls, it would cost a lot more than $35 a call, because we would have to fundamentally staff our stations differently to ensure the capability. So, the, maybe the more analogous contract's the one we have with District 8, which says that we'll treat your calls as we treat our calls. So, it's not that we're gonna go to every call. It's gonna be that we treat them just like we treat our calls. So, they're gonna come in, we're gonna hit them in the order they come in, we're gonna hit them in the order of, of their nature. And sometimes, you know, I don't, I don't actually think it happens. Does it ever happen? You guys don't get to a call?
I just want to bring our guy who calls.
I was gonna say.
For our troops.
Somebody gets to a call, but there's theoretical possibility that there could be a call that ends up hanging, and, so. Anyway, if there are any other questions, you'll see this one back. We'll probably just put it on the consent calendar for your second reading.
Okay. We have another report, Aaron, you need to do on the ASME. Pressure and track.
Yeah, we can do that one, and then that leads into Leo. We've got a, a, a question for you, an option, on our garbage cans. So, first things first, you have also on your base an MOU with ASME. This MOU is intended to address an issue. Has somebody asked me at the last council meeting or the council meeting before, what happens if we fail? And while I am confident we will not fail, my answer to you was, well, we'll just go back to the way we are today. We'll take the garbage truck we bought, we'll take the cans we bought, we'll wrap them up into a bid proposal, we'll put it out on the marketplace, and somebody will come along and bid to do the service, and they'll take up our capital, and they'll provide the service probably on a seven-to-10-year contract for, I think I told you before, probably more money than Wast is offering to do it today. But then I got to thinking, right now, this work, that is curbside recycling, yard waste and commercial recycling, is not bargaining unit work. So, that's kinda the, the whole term of art of what's within their realm to bargain. You, as a council, are free to perform this work in any way you want to right now, today. Once we bring it in-house, you are no longer free to perform that work in any way you want to. You have certain requirements under our contract with ASME Local, and certain requirements under the, the later relations rules for what you'd do if you wanted to undo it. And so, I went to ASME and just said, "That's not gonna work for us." You know, I told the council they could go back to status quo. They've got to be able to go back to status quo. And the locals said, "Well, we get that." You know, and, and that's what this memo does, is it says that anytime within a 24-month period beginning on August, or September 1st of this year, if the city decides that the program is not operationally sustainable, then anytime in that 24-month window, you can just go back to May of, right now, to May of 15. That is, you lay off the employee under the contractual requirements, but the work becomes not bargaining unit work. And you can go out and publicly bid it, you can not do it, you can do some of it in-house, some of it private, however you wanna do. So, this is intended to maintain the maximum flexibility for you as we roll into implementation. I truly believe you won't need it, but it just seemed prudent for you to have that.
It does.
So, I'm looking for a motion to approve the MOU on the garbage program, if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah. That's a great one.
So moved. Don't have to say it.
The mayor will restate it for you.
Yes.
Is that right? Second. Okay. Who seconded?
I did.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Carnegie, and a second by Councilmember Waggoner to approve the, motion to approve the garbage program.
The MOU?
With ASME.
Yeah.
They already put it away. I don't know what your local number is. I don't know what your local number is.
176 SW.
You've got to have that because you don't want to, all right, I already put it away. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Against? All right, it passes.
Well, then the other piece of this program, on your consent calendar, you adopted the budget amendment, which gives us the authority to go ahead and proceed with the trash truck and roll-off, or excuse me, the containers, the carts. But, and I want to compliment Waste Management, they had a productive meeting with them yesterday about transition planning, and we're continuing to work with them and trying to figure out who's going to be our provider for the material we collect. Turns out that the city of Anacortes is transitioning right now from Rabanco to Waste Management, and that's a go-live date of July 1st. So they have those green containers in the back of the room there. They have about 6,700 of them that they're willing to sell to us for, what'd you say, 55 cents?
55 cents.
55 cents per container.
I'll from 45.
We've budgeted, you know, about $225,000 to buy containers. Now, what that would buy us at the $40 per container approximately price point are what you see on the far left. That's a 96-gallon toter with color-matched lids, and they're embossed with City Lozos, et cetera. So 96 gallons, recycling would be blue on blue, yard waste would be blue on green. If we chose to save the $200,000 and go with the used containers, we would end up restickering them. They'd still have the Rabanco sign on them, but you'd have 64-gallon containers, and they'd be green on green. So we'd have to kind of sticker them up to say, you know, this one's your recycling, this one's your yard waste. So we would be giving people, I think, slightly less, you know, because the cans are smaller. Now, we can double down your cans, and we'd have plenty of cans to do it, but that's a little bit cluttery. But it saves over $200,000 at project implementation. So our recommendation, Leo and I, and I'm sure Patsy agrees because $200,000 is nothing to sneeze at, is that we go ahead and do that, and we then implement the carts that we really want over the course of the next five years. We do 1,000 carts a year. We just kind of bring them out. We hit different, you know, routes, one route per year, and phase them out. But, you know, that's just a huge amount of money. It takes our capital from, you know, $550,000 down to $350,000. So it gives us a lot of buffer as we roll into the program.
Well, you know, I cared about color as much as anybody here, but I don't care $200,000 worth, so. They can be any color they want if we're saving that kind of money.
What size are they again?
Those are 64-gallon or 60?
64.
64.
And is that, what is that for, recycling or yard waste?
It'd be both.
Oh.
Yeah, so you might have, like, two of those for recycling and one for yard waste. I mean, that's what I have at my house.
So what we have is that middle one, right now, for recycling?
No, recycling's the far left. It's the large one.
What we have currently?
No, no, they have 68 gallons right now.
Oh, I don't.
No, I have two of those big ones.
Because we, during the pilot area, we did 96s.
Yeah, well, that's what you've got too, is a 96 for recycling.
Is that just the middle one, right?
That's the far left.
Is it? That thing looks huge.
Well, it's a big can.
So it doesn't look that big in my yard.
If we're going to save $200,000, what did you just say about putting 1,000 in exchange per year? So?
Yeah, so the concept is that we would use these at project implementation, but we would phase them out over the course of the next, I don't know, five, six, seven years. So we would not keep them forever.
But why would you start that? You won't start that at year one.
No, no, no.
What were you saying?
Well, so everybody would get the green cans in this summer.
Right.
And then starting in 2016, we would start replacing them with the cans that we really want, you know, about 1,000 or maybe a little less than 1,000 a year, just because that's a lot of money.
So what would that cost? Replace a can that's already usable?
Ultimately, the cost would be the same. It's still the $200,000. It's just that it would be spread out over the next five, six, seven years.
About $50,000 a year?
Yeah, $40,000 a year if you run it, you know, a little longer.
Now, what's the life on these? Why wouldn't, if we're going to buy these, why wouldn't we use them?
Yeah, for their life.
The five years?
Well, they're, at least according to their current owners, they are kind of at the end of their useful life. Now, Leo's driven around Anacortes surreptitiously and surveyed a bunch of them and feels like they can live for, I don't know, a number of years.
What do you think?
Our current ones are 15 years.
Yeah.
So, and they're breaking, I don't know, I usually buy about 100 a year, like, every place.
So these ones we're purchasing, how old are they?
They are approximately 10 years old.
I see.
So five years makes sense.
Five years makes sense, doesn't it?
Yeah, plus from a customer service standpoint, they're not the preferred alternative. They're just preferred because they're so much cheaper. I mean, really, you know, for yard waste, for example, we're going to be taking people down from their current 96s to a 64.
Well, wouldn't you get, you know, you're going to cut the price in because I fill mine up.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to have to figure out what we do with, we may have to do an option where you get 164 or 264. So you have either a lower price or a higher price.
We fill them up. And now, now my recycle, I have two 96s, so now I'll be getting three 64s.
I certainly can do that, yes.
Yeah, and then I still, I can see where I was being, but I understand the price.
The other thing we can do is we can replace, and that's probably what I would recommend, is we'll replace the green waste first. We'll probably implement new green waste cans first because we don't need as many. You know, we only need 900 at implementation of those. In fact, we might want to think about that.
Fill that thing with sawdust.
Buy those now and use these for our recycling and spread that out a little longer.
I don't want to have little cans around. If I'm going to pay $10.
50-53, so $45,000, so $50,000. So that's something that we'll think about. I guess the main question for you tonight is, can you live with the cheaper can or the green cans knowing that they're so cheap?
They replace those can, they don't, it's not 10 years all the cans are the same age because they replace them every year. So we have a stagger there, so all of the cans could be anywhere from 1 to 10 years, correct?
Oh, correct, yes.
So I think we can get more use in five years.
Oh, I believe so too. And, I mean, during my operational purchasing, I just buy enough to get us through for the bad times. Sometimes the winter will be bad and we'll get, you know, 12 breakages in a month. Sometimes summers are rough on them and you get 12 in a month. But, yeah, so it's up and down.
Could it also be used for people who don't have as much quantity of their yard waste or recycling? I mean, could?
Well, I'm thinking all out here, but I really think we probably want to do the yard waste cans now. And what we talked about before was having a single service size for those, so it's uniform. And so I think we probably would, instead of spending $225,000, maybe spend $70,000. Do all the yard waste cans, do them all 96s, make them all color-matched, they look good. So what you have today is what you'll have tomorrow for the same price, so we're not touching pricing. And then we'll take all these green cans, roll those out for recycling, and a lot of our people already have 64-gallon recycling, so it's no change for them, just a different color. And then we can double or triple down because we'll have enough cans so that every one in the city could have two if we really wanted them to. Most people won't. And then we can spread it out like you're suggesting, so maybe we don't start replacement until year three.
And we'll get rid of our city grass dump?
No, no.
That also?
We'll keep the grass dump at least for, I would think for sure, for 2016. And then the question will be, do we, as we ramp up our subscription rate for the curbside pickup, do we maybe run that less frequently or only after storm cleanups or only for big things? So that's a question that you'll be seeing in the future. It's pretty popular, though, the grass dump.
It's very popular. It's a good enhancement. What we can do too is, you know, advertise.
We don't want them dumping out in the alley.
Down there, and I think that would be huge for the citizens, especially when they know that they could throw pizza boxes, food, vegetables, their pumpkins, all that good stuff in there, and we'll be able to sell.
Yeah, I got one, you know, I got a bunch of yard, with different rentals, but someone taught me, I don't know who it was, Aaron. Said they always tell me to?
Patsy taught you that.
What, to get rid of them in October when the grass doesn't grow and then bring them back? You know, you call Waste Management up and you need it like in April when the grass starts. So you don't pay that eight bucks for the four months?
Where you don't have leaves?
You've got to rake a leaf.
Are we going to still do that? Are we just going to be smart and say, hey, we won't charge you the four months your grass doesn't grow, and you keep the can? I mean, I think it's a lot of hassle for the city to go out and pick up the cans. No, they come and get mine, Waste Management did, and then, and then they, and then you can't get a hold of them.
Yeah, you have to keep mine too. I followed Patsy's playbook, and then you can put the leaves in, it all went along, and on the first day of pickup, they take it.
Oh, but then don't they charge you? I mean, I was afraid they'd charge you.
Yeah, they do.
Well, you know, the first time they picked it up, they did spill a tag on that says, oops, I'm not sure you subscribed for this service. But then the second time, they got me billed properly.
So, because I don't need it when the grass isn't growing.
It makes it, it makes operational sense to leave them there. The citizens have, for a lot of the snowbirds that go to Texas and stuff, after the winters, we leave their cans there. They just keep them in the garage for the season.
Okay.
So my opinion would be, we only replace those cans we need to replace. I don't think, I don't think we have to go in there and throw a number out, 1,000, like you were saying, because if they are staggered 1 through 10, there's not going to be 1,000 cans that we need to ditch.
Yeah, I'm confident they are not staggered 1 through 10 because the contract had a termination date, and there's just no way in the world that the private contractor was showing up and used 7, 8, 9, 10, putting a bunch of cans out on a contract that ends. So, you know, what they do is they buy, at least what Waste does, you know, you buy them all on the front end, you amortize them out, and then what you're replacing are the ones that are damaged. So it's, it's not like if you have, in Anacortes's case, 6,700 cans, they're not doing 600 cans a year for 10 years to keep them up. They're doing 6,700 cans in year one, and then each year thereafter, they're getting the broken ones, which, you know, Leo's telling you, in our case, is about 100 cans out of our 3,500, about 100 a year. So, but I agree with you. I think we, and Leo will run, he's comfortable running things as long as he can until they don't run anymore. So we'll save money.
They're broken.
We'll save money.
I have a couple of questions. I was wondering about, I guess I missed the part where they're going to be, the garbage and the recycling are going to be different somehow? How do you?
We're going to put stickers on those cans there that are going to indicate recycling on it, so the, all the citizens will be able to see that very well. And we're slowly moving over to trash-only, black lids.
Oh, yeah.
As I replace the cans for the year, so every time I buy a replacement group of cans, it gets a black lid on it for garbage. So we'll sticker these. Anybody that has a, will have trouble with it, if a litter, cans unusual, I'll slap the garbage-only sticker on their garbage can.
Plus, the recycling will all be green on green. So it'll be the only green-on-green cans we have. So they will all look like that. That's the other reason to use something different for yard waste, is it does provide differentiation.
And then another question was, do those come with a liner in them for people who don't even use that much?
No, they will not. It's one size fits all for recycling, so they'll get.
You don't pay for different sizes for recycling? That's all flat rate?
No, I'm talking about for garbage.
Oh, garbage is, or the other cans. We've got a whole range of sizes for garbage.
Okay, got it, got it.
20, 32, 64, 96.
Okay, because right now I have the tiniest. Okay, because that way, I was wondering about rates going up on people who are using liners, because no sense in that. Okay, thank you.
The, just maybe, since we're on the topic, the trial period of our thing is over this month, right? So every other week from my street, first of June?
If you want your old can back, though, you need to call Serena.
Okay, I do.
So do I. What are we doing to get the cans back? I can't remember.
Are you automatically?
Yeah, well, I'm automatically changing everybody back into less you call and see something different.
Sorry, bad advice. You'll get one, but you'll get it sooner if you call.
I'll get my TV can back?
Yeah. That's it. We'll continue to move forward. I'm not sure if there's anything else we need to do on this program. Given the budget amendment, we'll be bringing back to you a contract for the commodities. We'll probably have a contract with Rabanco to purchase their cans, and we're just moving through the process.
Yeah, and the PO for the truck and whatever the containers are.
Yeah, so you'll have some more, you'll have some more reports as we continue through Oh, there is one other question. Glass. We need to make a decision, and we need to make it fairly soon because it's going to affect all of our public information campaign about whether we want to keep glass in the commingled recycling stream or not. And I think we talked about this last time. Waste is giving me a price, so we'll have it by the end of the week for what they would charge us if we pulled glass out of the commingled stream. And of course, the price will be lower than if it's in. Republic gave differential pricing if it's in or out. Pierce County has moved to no glass in commingled recycling. It's something, you don't have to decide it tonight, but I would say probably in June because it would affect all of our stickering. If we're going to pull it out, we need to know so we can start informing the citizens that glass is no longer in. And remember, the reasons why they're pulling it out is that it damages the rest of the recycling. Basically, it spoils the commodity value and the recyclability of the cardboard and papers because the glass shatters and little bits of it embed in those fibers, and they can't use it for its intended purpose. So glass is a dog. It costs money to get rid of. The other commodities, you get paid to get rid of. And the concept would be to go ahead and say, we're not taking glass anymore, but you can come drop it off at the yard waste site. We'll have the three colors. You can just take your glass and sort it out. If they are sorted, we can actually get paid something for the glass. Commingled glass, you have to pay to dispose of. And then it enhances the value of the rest of the commodities. So for those who are kind of green-minded, taking glass out means the rest of your recyclables are actually more recyclable than leaving glass in, even if your glass ends up going to the landfill.
Is it worth our trouble to sort the glass into three colors and take it over there? Or is that just, or is it?
It's just for you to feel good, and it saves you money because you don't have to put it in your garbage and pay for that capacity. So from the city's perspective, it's definitely worth your trouble because we'll get paid to get rid of it, and we don't pay, you know, $88 a ton to dump it at the county transfer station. But for a citizen, it would be an altruistic gesture, other than it would save you a little bit of money in your garbage bill because you don't waste capacity.
Can we possibly provide those just little open totes for that if one of our residents wants one?
You mean for the purpose of them doing the sorting or for us to come get it?
Yeah, well, no, you, like, I wouldn't want, because I have a little bin for all my recycling, it's commingle now, if I wanna separate it, I'll have to go out and find another bin.
Well.
You know, is there a?
You have box, cardboard box, paper bag.
Yeah.
I think what a lot, what a lot of people do is they just take the glass and put that separate, and then if you drive it down to Leo's yard, you just walk, like you do at the county, you just throw it into the three bins, boom, 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 until it's empty, but, I don't know, I think it'd be tricky for us to start buying sorting systems to ship out to everybody.
Well, not sorting system, but just a tote, I mean, just some sort of additional tote.
Oh, we could probably get you one of those sweet Rabanco totes for 55 cents, we'll have a few extras kicking around.
Yeah, you can bring it down once a year or something.
If you can lift it.
If you can.
Got wheels.
But I guess that, that's a question for you, 'cause we're looking for direction on that.
What was the difference in cost that Republic provided?
Do you remember? Price difference if we pulled the glass out?
I think it was ten dollars a ton.
That's nothing.
It was pretty significant.
But then you were gonna be putting in our garbage, some people will, so that might go up.
For some, we'll, we'll, uh, collect the same volume, but have a little more weight.
Beer bottles.
Yeah, but then they're gonna be filled up, and they're gonna have to get a bigger can, and they're gonna pay more.
So, Pierce, Pierce County reported that the use of glass has gone down significantly, you know, for, for a lot of people, and it kinda depends where you shop, you know, if you shop at a co-op, you're getting a lot of glass still, but if you shop at a regular grocery store, you know, there are very few, few items now are in glass that used to be, they're all moved to plastic.
I haven't seen beer yet.
It makes me feel better.
Plastic beer.
Beer and wine.
Beer in a plastic bottle.
Beer and wine, yeah.
Also, the plastic's not recyclable.
Yeah, box wine, get your wine in a box, so Coleman recommends.
Yeah. Okay.
Eagle Haven will recycle their wine bottles.
Can you get info from us like in the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, something for you to think about, maybe talk to some constituents.
Okay, we'll go to reports from committee, and we'll start with Chief Klinger, filling in for the police department.
Uh, Chief Tucker sends his apologies, he was unable to get free from his other commitment that he had, he says, uh, but they've had a very busy week, short week so far, and he'll update everybody at the next council meeting. On the fire department side, uh, we're, uh, getting ready to start, um, prepping for our training academy. The county came to us, uh, the volunteer departments in Skagit County, which are all about Anacortes and, um, Alverna and Burlington, uh, they came and asked us if we would put on and run the recruit academy, uh, so we're gonna go ahead and take care of that for them. It's gonna start in September and it'll run through December. Uh, it's, it's kinda, it's nice to see, uh, if you get the chance, we'll, we'll, we'll keep you posted on which classes we'll have. People coming from all over the county, Mount Erie, Rockport, Marble Mount, Concrete, District Eight, District Six, Big Lake, Lake Murray, Conway, everybody coming to see the way to get trained, uh, that's a real feather in our cap and to our training officers, so, uh, that'll be starting in September.
Okay. John?
Well, on the Northern State front, the annexation went through the B R B, and I haven't heard anything yet, gonna give them a couple more days to make sure that they don't have any comments on that, so the annexation seems to be moving along okay. Um, the consultant team has put together, um, a draft of the response and report on the E I S scoping, so hopefully we'll be getting an official document respond, uh, you know, a report on what the findings are from the E I S environmental impact statement scoping period, that was the public hearings that we had, and written comments that were received. Uh, and running along parallel to that, they're also working on the sub-area plan, which is sort of the, the high-level, 10,000-foot view of what the, what the campus would look like, and sort of the general policies and, and plans that would be implemented in, uh, the campus. And that's, that's gonna be a big document, that's gonna be a little ways out, but they're well on their way to something that reviewable for, for staff. Um, that's it for Northern State. The buildable lands analysis, um, I think last I reported was just about due. The consultant has returned to us a lot of data, um, it's very raw still at this point, but I've gone through with a fine-tooth comb to, uh, to verify what parcels are buildable and not buildable, and, um, working back and forth with them to, to, uh, get our G I S layers correct, buffers from utility lines, and just, there's, there's a lot of data that, uh, they needed help getting together to get accurate information, and that's coming together nicely. I should have something very workable from them next week, if not later this week, and that'll be good, because county wanted to know by early June whether or not we're gonna need to change our U G A, and, uh, we don't, we don't, we still don't have that answer yet. Um, that's where we are with the buildable lands analysis, um, and then in the, for building department, there you've, uh, we've got yet another builder that's joined the fray up at the Sauk Mountain View Estates, so original builders out there were Gradview Homes that did first, I don't know, 15 or 20 homes out there, and then another local builder's picked up four lots and started building up there, and since then, another, uh, another builder from Snohomish County's picked up six lots, and they're, they've dropped off a couple of building permits this week, and will be dropping off more later this week. Uh, so, you know, maybe that development'll have more of the look at the Old Town, where you've got, instead of same builders, styles, home, all through the subdivision, it'll be.
Three hundred houses are same and two different?
There'll be versions from different builders that, you know, give some variety to the, to the landscape.
That's a good thing.
And, uh, we're keeping our, you know, building department very, very busy.
How about Northern State? We, make sure we know that we have July 17th.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And then, and then there's a tour the 18th, Jim.
Good, I was worried about, I was worried about your dinner.
I've been worrying about that for about an hour.
Um, so, two things on Northern State, they're both on your agenda, actually, so you'd, you'd see them, one is the tour, which is on, uh, June 18th, 2:30 to 4:30, uh, they're looking for, uh, an, an attendance list before that date, so if you could let me know if you're going to be attending, how I can get that to them. It's possible we'll be touring the second Omni processor at the same time, we haven't decided yet, timing's a little tight. If so, that requires photo I D passports preferred to get through the security there at Janiki.
It said just for elected officials only?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, this one's gonna be for, that's the county commission, the port commission, the city council, and we've also extended it to the planning commission, since they've been pretty involved in the project.
They can't bring a baby on my back?
No. You wanna sneak in and attend, yeah, you gotta get, the mayor can give you that tour, he's got, he's got the secret parking pass now to get up to the hospital site. Um, so I don't know if anybody knows now if you're gonna be here, uh, but if you could let me know, I'll, we'll get the attendance list to them, so they can get it on there. And then the other one's on July 17th, we're having a joint special meeting, so that's a Friday, 10 a.m., it'll be here, so it's just like the last couple we've had, with the county commission, the port commission, and the city council, in a three-meeting, special-meeting format.
That's during the day.
That will be a very interesting meeting, we're anticipating hearing from, uh, the port, what their proposal will be to the state for ultimate land transfer, and they'll be looking for the partners to kinda agree that that's a good plan, so, show you a lot of detail that day and, and go through that with them. So, lots, lots of action on Northern State, it's been very busy, Peter Janiki's in Dakar, Senegal, right now, and then I understand will be leaving Africa and heading to the Caribbean to look at another possible installation location for an Omni processor, and it's, it's just continuing to be, you know, wildly popular with folks all over the world looking for these things. The, the big question's gonna be, how can you start getting them built? How fast can you build them? How fast can you run them and get them out into the field? That's about it.
Patsy?
He spilled water last night. Um, it's annual report season, um, I just wanted to let the council know that so far we've finished the annual reports to the state auditor's office for both the city and the transportation benefit district, um, completed the report to the U S D A, that's required as long as we have the loan on the, the building here. The lodging tax report, and then there's a small public disclosure, um, commission report that we send in. Probably three-quarters of the way done with the Wash Dot Street Report, and then there's a red flag identity, um, theft is, is what the red flag report's about. And then, um, also on my annual checklist is the impact fee report for council, so we're getting done with most of those annual reports.
Thank you. Kevin? Nothing. Jermaine?
Um, actually, I just wanted to comment on a really nice, or Memorial Day service at the Union Cemetery, and it, I was thinking, there's so much history there, I actually went and looked at some of the, I always do, look at some of the tombs or the grave, the gravestones, and, um, some of them really needed some work, and so I was just wondering if there was a group, this is more directed at you, Nathan, but I, I read that there is American Battle Monuments Commission, I don't know if they do stuff locally to, to restore some of the graves, and, um, you know, to make the, the stones look really nice and polished and kind of longer-lasting, I don't know if you've ever heard of that?
I've heard of it, but never, uh, if you could look into it.
Yeah, that would be really awesome.
We've had LDS church, and I think, I think there was some, some senior projects, they go out and clean it in the past.
Yeah, we can get a lot of volunteers that are looking for little projects, at least they put a lot of folks out there, do manual cleaning and stuff, they all look into the house, I'll get that.
Yeah, yeah, American Battle Monuments Commission, I'm not sure what they do to, to restore them, but.
They just do veterans?
Yeah, just for veterans, sorry, and then, uh, some of them didn't even have, some of them were just made of wood, and just had like a leather.
He's crawling in my.
Leather sign on them, but nothing on it, and I don't know if, I'm sure there's some, something, but it just was, uh, I don't know, I feel like there should be some, someone taking care of those. I think that's it. Oh, and then, then I talked about, um, you know, because of the accident that just happened since the last council meeting at the Woolley Market, I was wondering if there was, um, something we could talk about, or something we can do to kind of, I know it happens a lot, but, and it happens all over, but I feel like there should be, that basically something should happen from that, we should've learned something from that, and so somehow we can kind of curtail that from happening again, or at least make it not so easy to happen again.
Bartenders need to be reeducated on over-serving.
Yeah, the bartenders are, are, I think, over-serving, but, um.
What about limiting hours on weekdays or something?
I don't know that you can do that.
Yeah, so from the, you know, the law enforcement standpoint, they, they really haven't had anything in quite a number of years, you know, that's kinda risen to that level.
Hmm.
Um, they probably, if Lynn, if Lynn were here, she'd probably tell you that sometimes it's a little bit cyclical, how that particular case was referred to the Liquor and Cannabis Authority, or whatever they're called now.
L C C A.
I don't know, uh, they'll, they'll do whatever they'll do, it, it's difficult often to prove up after the, the fact, um, you know, you basically had, it's all on video, so you can see exactly what happened, they basically had a couple guys scuffling, a third one gets involved, and somebody ends up going through the window, you know, so it's, it's different than the militias kinda walking up, throwing up, you know, a rock through the window, it's drunk people fighting in the street, going through the window. So, um, certainly the police can double down on their efforts to, to do that kinda bar check, and to do bartender reminders that, hey, over-service is an issue, and.
Bad issue.
You know, that, that's something that, that's, that's happened periodically, and I think the last time I remember, kinda, all the bartenders and bar owners coming in for the meeting was with Chief Wood, probably in the Boondocks era, and, you know, it does work, you know, it does work, and that, that bar, I, I just don't feel like we've had a lot of complaints there.
Yeah, you have, you've had, you've had urination, one reason the, the beauty shop, or the barber shop has that.
Oh, the great.
I mean, the great.
She said that for a long time.
But, um, it worked, because we'll put cameras in, and we caught the bad guys, so it did work, I mean, uh, it's unfortunate the window got broken.
Yeah.
In the past, we didn't have cameras, if everybody down there would put cameras, I think it'd be a great deterrent, and it'd help the police.
But you caught, you caught those bad guys, but there's another person who over-served, if that is the case, um, that is.
That's liquor control, and then, and then how do you, and, and I understand it, but there's times where I've, I've been in taverns, a guy'll walk in and have just one drink, and then he's, because he's been home all day drinking, and then he just walks in, gets one drink, and now that bar is liable, even though he just had a drink, so I mean, it's a, it's a tough deal.
Yeah, so that limit's so obvious.
Well, yeah, then you gotta figure that out.
They're trying to do that.
That's what their job is.
We're saying over-served, but is there any proof or evidence that they had high B A Cs, I mean, was that it, or were they just being jerks, and, you know, like, a jerk with one beer can start a fight?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I think they were, from what I've heard, they were.
Pretty drunk.
Intoxicated, but I, I don't know that they checked that, and I don't think they were operating motor vehicles or anything like that, so.
We did through our law enforcement, the underage checks, is that something we could do in the bars itself? Can we send a, an undercover teen in there looking for beer to test, I mean, to see, I mean, if they're gonna over-serve, they're gonna probably serve to anyone.
Yeah, they do that, too.
Yeah, they, they actually.
Uh, the, the under-service, uh, yeah, they, they do those checks.
In the bars also, not just buying them at the stores, in the bars?
Little separate book of business, but that's something that, that they do when they have time, they're, they're pretty, um.
They're like, oh, guys, drink outside.
You know, those are projects that they like to do, but they're pretty stretched right now, uh, you know, today they executed a search warrant over by the high school on a, on a, on a drug house, and, you know, those, that was the culmination of a pretty significant number of hours of work, and they, they've got a lot of irons in the fire right now on some of those fairly significant issues, not to say that this isn't a problem, but we, we've got them running in every direction, I guess I'd say it that way.
Well, I would just say that, you know, it's, it's, at the same time, you know, we wanna attract businesses, um, it's kind of, some of these businesses that we'd like to have, you know, occupied are right next to these bars, and I personally wouldn't want to, but, I mean, that's just too, um.
Hanging out smoking.
Yeah, the cigarettes, you'd have to clean up every morning, and, it's just, you know, I understand that they're there, but.
Bars are not generally great neighbors, in my experience.
Depending who, I guess depending on who.
Especially in Seattle, you don't pay good taxes here.
My parents.
What are we talking about?
Yeah, nothing.
Bars. So, you know, there is certainly, if you're looking for things you can do, I, I don't know if we can regulate the time, I, I've not researched that, I have a suspicion that's been preempted by state law, but I could find out if you wanted to know that. We had proposed to the city council, I don't remember, was it three or four years ago, a thousand-dollar annual tax to establishments that sold or served liquor, and the purpose of that was to essentially recuperate some of our costs, and at that time, we, Doug Wood brought, uh, dispatch statistics that just showed that, hey, you know, our call volumes are going to places that serve and sell liquor, and in fact, I think we were specifically looking at the bars, and then it was brought up that, well, a lot of people could pre-function with the grocery store liquor as well, so expanded it to every place that sold alcohol, and we had pushback from, you know, one person came to the council meeting, didn't like it, and, and I think she recommended a $300 instead of a thousand, and the council said, let's do the 300, so, you know, that, that, or 200, 250, excuse me, 250 dollars.
Your guy's right.
So, you know, you, you know, that is a tool that, that is available to you, if you wanted to do something like that, that could be used to fund specific enforcement of alcohol-related issues, you know, if you generated an extra, you know, 15 or 20 grand through business licensing for alcohol establishments, and then we targeted 100% of that money for essentially overtime emphasis work, you know, that would be a, just a direct nexus, you know, well, you'll pay, and that's gonna buy you this much more enforcement in your establishment. So, that was something that we'd done, council did a quarter measure of what was proposed, you could do more if you want.
Why don't, why, you know, some places run a good ship.
Yep.
And why, I don't understand, they get penalized because someone else doesn't run a good ship, why don't we just do stings like, and be Liquor Control Board, come out and do more, and get everybody paranoid, so they will run a good ship, instead of cutting them slack, I mean, you, I've seen the idiots in there shooting pool at midnight, and you know they're, they're too hammered, and, uh, so, I mean, I don't understand why we want to tax people who are doing a good job more, because someone else is screwing up.
Yeah, well, you could do that, too, you could.
That's what we, maybe we need to do.
Question, of course, is how do you pay for the specific enforcement, but we could do that.
Maybe Liquor Control Board needs to come up more. They're getting paid some.
Request it, Mike.
Yeah.
It's all in.
Anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Um, I think it might be time to send Woods' loggings neighbors another letter regarding cleanup of that lot behind them.
John knows them well.
It's a little hidey hole for the delinquents that should be in school lately, because it's getting way overgrown again, so.
So is, so is our, our street right in front of my house.
Things are grown.
But, yeah, I think, I think they should come in.
What about, what about the property that's further south of that, 'cause that's really overgrown, where the, along the fence line, 'cause they, they leveled that area, but they, they forgot that second half that connects to Jamison, is that owned by Tree Source also?
That's owned by Burlington Northern. That's owned by Burlington Northern.
Oh, well, listen for us on them since they're not very friendly to us.
Yeah. That requires an act of Congress.
That might not do it.
That might not work.
Keith, you, I have a couple things. I, I've been spending a lot of, of time on Township. I know that's not my ward, but it's Keith's. But I, I would like to see the speed sign set out somewhere on the Township Street, down by, oh, down by the corner of Fidalgo and maybe Sterling and Township, to slow them down.
Into the park?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really bad.
I was out there and, working, I have a duplex out there, and I saw, I, I couldn't even count, I was gonna count how many I could count, and I, they got above ten, so I stopped.
Yeah, that's bad.
And it's, that's one of the, that's one of the speedways of the city, I think, is Township.
You know what? I had a request. Let's all ask the chief to put the radar trailer out there.
Yeah.
Darn it.
Oh, sounds like we have a busted radar trailer that we, we could drag out that wouldn't do much good.
Just take an orange can and put forty-seven.
I had a request from a citizen down there who said, can you do something like they do in Seattle where you put one of those center, you know, it's a traffic calming device, essentially.
I like that idea. Let's do it.
And, no, it's a different, a citizen who lives down there, township and like Dunlop, he says that a lot of, a lot of people, a surprising number of people, like to try to get maybe a little bit of air either up or down on that hill. And, you know, it's difficult because you've got a lot of kids coming and going from the park, you've got some sight distance issues, and people hitting sixty, fifty, sixty miles an hour. And, you know, so it's something else. So I don't know if the council's got any interest in something like that, but that may be a, an appropriate application for, you know, what basically becomes a large concrete landscape feature in the middle of the road.
I like that.
Here's, here's why I...
And I want to spread them all over the city.
Here's why I would prefer a speed bump instead of that. We, motorhomes go down there to the park. So if you have those big things, I, I have a motorhome, and they're a pain.
See now, well, yours is an eighty footer.
Anyway, a, a speed bump would accomplish...
All you gotta do is know how to drive.
At the top of the hill or, and/or the bottom of that hill would accomplish the same thing.
Well, can the fire department get around a little roundabout thing?
Yeah, the fire department would be fine. They probably like, I don't, I mean, I guess they like that rather than a speed bump.
What kind of liability?
Fire department doesn't like speed.
Well, sure, if you're speeding there.
So, so I don't know if you heard that, but from the fire perspective, they'd rather have a go-around-the-flower-pot than a speed bump. And it's really a patient care issue.
Ah, well.
It's, it's tough to be a patient in the back of the rig and getting...
Be bad to be in the back when you crashed into a flower pot, too, but, very well.
Hugh, anymore? Yeah, I've got two more things. One of the, there's a guy down there in Township that was talking to me, teeth-nosing. But anyway, he wanted us to remember Old Cedar Woolley because they don't have sidewalks and they don't have the pavement. He has a difference between Old Cedar Woolley and New Cedar Woolley. New Cedar Woolley would basically probably be talking about my ward, Ward Five, as compared to Ward Four. And I told him that I'd bring it up at the council meeting, and, and I believe he has a point. He has a point. And we do need to put sidewalks in, and we do need to repave, and we do need to find ways to do that. And of course, Aaron knows that we do the best for less, so I would never say that we can't do that. Something we have to look at. And then the last thing was, on my hill, I complained last time on Duke's Hill, I call that my hill, Tony and my, my hill. I, I, I run out there every day, so I, I see it. And I, a bull had just pulled over a truck, and I wanted to see what he was pinching him for. So Jake Brick. So someone called someone, and there was a state bull out there, and I, so I asked him. I said, how many guys have you, how many trucks have you got? And he said, three. And it was a state patrol. And also Tucker's has a patrolman that's been coming up there, and there have been tickets issued.
I bet it's Eddie.
And he hides right below Dean's house.
I'm pretty sure that Officer Eddie stops more people than the rest of the department could.
What I wanted to say is the traffic has noticeably slowed down.
It works, doesn't it?
Good.
Yeah. Good. People pass that along.
Yeah. That's all.
If I might just add to Hughes, I think the city should create a sidewalk arterial system. Think about schools and major walkways for, to getting into town, to getting into schools. So I, I think that's something we should look at. And then secondly, with heading into campaign season, I think it's a conflict of interest to have Cedar Woolley employees working directly with the public, working for the city while running for office. And I, I think that we should look at that.
What are you talking about?
Well, I guess we have one currently who's running, and he, you know, is working with the public, and he can campaign while, well, you know, to people, everybody who comes to, you know, his, you know, his station. So I just think that's a conflict of interest to have someone able to campaign while at work.
Somebody's doing that?
Yes, last year I had a couple...
Last year?
Last year I had a couple of complaints that someone was campaigning while working, and he's running again for office, and I just think it's a conflict of interest.
Okay. There's this thing in your packet you guys, you can, if you have something that you want to, to bring attention that really we don't need to discuss, you can put stuff in here, and the staff can get it. That's what we have this little red guy for.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Okay, seconded. Second, all those in favor, stand. Thank you.